This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on the City Clerk, Iva Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles here. Councilman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Echols.
Here.
Billingsley.
Present.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask President Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather today. Father, we thank you for all of those in attendance. We ask that you would anoint and touch those that are here, Father, and bless this meeting, Father, that we may accomplish tasks that are pleasing in your sight, Father God. We thank you for this great city, Father. We thank you for the people that reside therein, Father, and we thank you for the greatness that ensues, Father. Through and through it all, we will never forget to give you the glory, the honor, and the praise for it's in Jesus' name. We ask it all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Works Committee, Finance Committee, Work Session, and City Council meeting held on September 15.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of September 11th through the 17th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclaimations, Mayor. Unfinished business, we have none today. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2015 budgets. This ordinance approves the following budgets. General Fund, forty-nine million, one hundred eighty dollars and thirty...I'm sorry, forty-nine million, one hundred eighty thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars. Special Revenue Funds, seven million, eight hundred sixteen thousand, eight hundred seventy-six dollars. Debt Service Funds, six million, six hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred seventy-five dollars. Enterprise and Internal Service Funds, eleven million, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars...I'm sorry, eleven million, nine hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred fifty-two...two dollars. And Capital Projects Funds, eight million, nine hundred thousand. The proposed general fund budget provides that all entitled full-time employees shall receive a two-step increase, which is 2.5 percent. All non-full-time and part-time employees shall receive a fifty cents per hour increase. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading and the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the rules to consider the ordinance today at its first reading.
Second.
Clerk, will you take?
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no, so unanimous consent was not granted.
Now I move to adopt.
We're unanimous in favor.
It should be unanimous.
It has to be unanimous, so it'll be, um...
Do you know if we can change the vote?
No, sir.
Can I say something? Please.
Please do.
Mr. President, uh, there's a possibility that if we don't pass it today, then some of the people who will be getting the raise will miss the first week and maybe the second week. Is that not right, Lisa?
Yes.
Just, yes, I cannot say, there's just a lot of work that has to be done to get the budget in place and for us to get out the money. As early as we can get back on schedule, we also have to pass the budget today.
Okay.
Can I, can I say something? If leaf season's coming up here in the City of Gadsden, we've got some leaf equipment that I really need to get purchased here. It's gonna take ninety days for that equipment to get here. And if we could get this up today, I should, we should be able to get that leaf equipment here by the first of December to help with leaf season combat, because if we don't, we'll have a rough leaf season with equipment we've got.
Let me say something. The reason why I'm voting no is because, number one, I don't think we should be going up on retirees' insurance. The retirees are out there pinching pennies, deciding whether they're gonna buy medicine or they're gonna buy food. It's not right. Two-point-five percent raise across the board, that's good for somebody making ninety-four thousand dollars a year, but when you've got people making seven, seventy-five an hour, that's not good. We should go and give the higher wage earners a 1.5 percent of one-step raise, give the lower-income people a four-step raise, more than what they're getting now. So that's why I'm voting no. And then there's other reasons, but I'm not gonna go into all that today. Thank you.
I will say, we've been here nine years and, uh, we've gone up on insurance three times. It's not us, it's the state insurance that goes up. Uh, also, we've given raises, uh, eight out of nine years, or nine out of ten years, actually. But anyway, uh, you know, we still owe about sixty-something million, and there's a sheet that was passed around that told what people's insurance was gonna be. Uh, so, you know, I'm sure everybody in this room who has insurance where where they work is probably paying a lot more than our retirees. And also, we're paying 20 percent of what everybody makes every week into their state retirement. We're second highest in the state. It was 27. I'm glad we can still afford to pay it, because most people can't. I dare say there's been very few cities that's given that many raises, and we kept the insurance at 20 percent, as all the employees pay.
Deborah, can I...
Councilman Worthy, can I ask Councilman Worthy one thing?
You go.
Would you, uh, please just give us, uh, consideration to bring this up today under new business? And then after you voted yes for that, to help us bring it up, you could vote no on the budget when we proposed it?
No, sir, I will not.
One other, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm just as fervent as he is about retirees and increasing them, y'all.
We all are.
We all are. Why could we not later on come with an ordinance after we pass the budget, get everything going? If everybody's in unanimous consent to do an ordinance, reducing that, or getting it back to where, you know, not...
I got a question.
I don't know.
I got a question. Are you retired?
I'm retired, sir.
Does that give him the right to vote?
Number one, I'm not on the retirement's insurance. I'm still an employee with the city.
Okay.
And when I do go off of this, uh, insurance, I will go on my wife's. She's a schoolteacher.
Thomas, would it make any difference if later we came, we could come back with an ordinance?
Listen, let's move on. I've said no, that's what I meant. Thank you though. It's not only that, I got a whole list of stuffs I could run down. I asked for an itemized list of the budget. How can I vote on a budget if I don't even know where the money's going? That's what we should be wanting to know.
Why do you not, why do you not know where the money's going?
Because you gave me, you gave us an overall picture. I don't have an itemized budget. I asked you all for that, in the meeting.
That is not true.
No, it's not.
You have a budget that includes every department in the City of Gadsden.
It doesn't break it down.
It is itemized by line item. It doesn't get any more itemized than that.
Okay.
So, I think we'll... Yeah, we'll, we'll move on, we'll move on. Uh, we've, we've determined that we don't have unanimous consent, so we'll move on to the next item. The next item is a public hearing. It's an ordinance rezoning property located at 4122 Old Pump Station Road from R1, One Family District, and I1, Light Industrial District, to B2, General Business District. The owners, Bill and Charlotte Crossland, have requested the rezoning for the purpose of developing an RV park. The planning commission unanimously recommended the council approve the rezoning. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? This ordinance has been presented today for first reading and the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, I would like to suspend the rules, please, on this, and see, since we've already had the public hearing today, and see if we can't go and get this brought up today, please, since it's in District 6 and those people have worked really hard on doing what they've done out there, and I'd last if we could get this passed today, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent.
I make a motion we pass this today, please.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, this is, like I've said before, they spent a lot of money out there working on this. It's just gonna be a win-win for them and the whole City of Gadsden, it's gonna be right off of, uh, 59 and Highway 77, and I really appreciate what they've done for the city out there.
And also, we saw it in the planning session, and it was, uh, what they're planning to do is a lot of improvement, so it's gonna be also good for the city as far as other businesses around it.
And I hope we can now maybe get that road paved out there.
If there's no other discussion, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution authorizing an economic development agreement with Rare Hospitality International, Inc. The company proposes to locate a new Longhorn Steakhouse at 344 Albert Raines Boulevard with a capital investment of over $2 million to demolish the existing structure and construct a new building with additional improvements. The company agrees to employ a minimum of 30 full-time equivalent employees during the term of the agreement. Annual sales are anticipated to exceed $3 million. This would, this would grant a rebate of 50 percent of sales tax payments for a maximum period of four years up to a total of $200,000, whichever comes first. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution authorizing an economic development agreement with I-359 East, Inc. The company proposes to lease real property to Rare Hospitality International, Inc. for a new Longhorn Steakhouse if the city will agree to provide certain assistance to make the project financially feasible. This would convey certain real property for the amount of $1 in construction in consideration of the proposed infrastructure and development. If, if the developer fails to pursue the project within a period of a year, at the choice of the city, the developer shall reconvey the property or pay $125,000. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1306 Chandler Street in District 2. The last known owners are FNA MP LLC and the estate of Marjorie McNair. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in May of last year. There've been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 404 Nugent Court in District 2. The last known owners being the state of Alabama, the estates of Ronald and Charmaine Kitchens, heirs are Hope Stevens and Jason Kitchens. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started our case in August of last year. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 701 Henry Street in District 3. The last known owners are the estate of Henry Williams Jr., Margaret Milliner, and Myrtle Williams, heirs Ingrid Chacha, Delviante Collins, Derek Milliner, Orlando Milliner, and Destiny Milliner, care of Ingrid Chacha. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Now, if you will, give us your name and address, please.
I am Ingrid Chacha. It's, it's been a couple of years, uh, since my mom passed, and we have not been in agreement about the different properties, the 701 being one. Um, last week, we finally got an attorney to resolve some of the issues we had, and so we're planning to do something with it if we can get an extension, uh, maybe 60 days.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, let me start off by saying I too come from, from a large family, so I feel your pain as far as trying to get siblings to agree on anything. We started this case in August of 2014. There've been no improvements to the property, and based on the fact there are no improvements, we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance. I have talked with Councilman Worthy, and I think he's gonna have a recommendation. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we table this for 60 days.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 60 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 60 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 401 Reverend William C. Fleming Place, AKA Pipe Shop Alley, in District 3. The last known owners being Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church and Lucille Bush. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in February of this year. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1027 Fourth Avenue in District 5. The last known owners being the estate of Lucy Ann Ruffin, care of Kimberly Ruffin, Ruffin, and the City of Gadsden. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Mr. President, based on improvements recently to this property and this nuisance, we're asking this case to be table for 30 days. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
On recommendation of, of Brian Harbison, I move that we table it for 30, 30 days. 30 days. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I'm sorry, was there a different vote besides yes? No? Okay. All yeses. Thank you. Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1507 Garfield Avenue in District 5. The last known owner being the estate of Edith Estes, heir Tina Cox. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in June of 2014. There was a building permit taken out in April of this year. There've been no improvements to the property. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1027 Pine Street in District 5. The last known owners being the state of Alabama, Ronnie Pollard, and John B. Scott Jr. as trustee of the James M. Scott Trust. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started our case in June of 2014. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 2104 Norris Avenue in District 6. The last known owners being the state of Alabama and Lenny Lee Fillmore. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a burned structure. We started our process in April of this year. The house has been torn down, but not cleaned up. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
As you can see, that's, this is not a rehab piece of property out here. We're just gonna have to go in and clean it up, what's left of it. And as we do it, we'll have to just assess if we own the property, you know, to do it with.
Is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Items 21 through 25 are all public hearings, and they're resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for demolition that has already been performed, and we have five locations. I'm going to read the addresses and names, and anyone who wishes to speak about any of these may come forward. 1417 Fourth Avenue in District 5, 907 South 16th Street in District 5, 1603 McKinley Avenue in District 5, 2409 Norris Avenue in District 6, and 2505 Norris Avenue in District 6. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all five resolutions.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, there's probably, just roughly in my head, fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars we have liens against property that we will probably never collect. Most of them's against the state of Alabama, and the state of Alabama just don't wanna pay us. Go figure that.
Any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all five resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all five.
Item number 26 is a resolution creating job classifications. This amends resolutions R403-04 and R463-04 to add job classifications for paralegal, engineering superintendent, and assistant library director. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 27 is a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with Egypt Volunteer Fire Department. This is for use of a generator currently located at the Closed Alternate Emergency Operations Center at Northeast Alabama Regional Airport. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 28 is a resolution authorizing approval of appendix to emergency operations plan. This assigns the responsibility of monitoring for the potential of extreme heat and cold and requesting opening of heating and cooling centers in specific situations to the Gadsden Etowah County EMA. It also assigns the warming, cooling centers as Gadsden Public Library, Elliott Community Center, Carver Community Center, and the Salvation Army. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item, item number 29 is up for first reading. It's an ordinance assenting to annexation of property to City of Gadsden. It's an ordinance assenting to annexation of property to City of Gaston. Richard and Grace Layman have requested their property located on Camden Cove Court be annexed in the city. The Engineering Department has recommended approval. This ordinance was presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President. I have two items. The first one is from Parks and Recreation, and I ask for unanimous consent. And this has to do with a... We're sponsoring the Jazz in the Park on October the 4th at the Mott Glossar Amphitheater. And I ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Is there any discussion?
I believe this is something that Parks and Recreation does along with the City of Gaston, and it's budgeted for $300, $500. But this is a jazz. This is something that will entertain me for the citizens of Gaston.
Any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
My second asking for unanimous consent, and this comes from the legal department, and this is authorizing agreement with the local government services for a cable television franchise management service.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President. Go ahead, Bob.
I have one. Resolution authorizing agreement with the Advanced Structural Design Incorporated for structural engineering services required for review of an alternate boardwalk design for the Couche River Park development. I ask for unanimous consent to consider today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk?
I think it will be good for our city engineer to kind of talk about it a minute.
Absolutely. This is an alternate design that was submitted during negotiations with our contractor for this project. The design, the alternate design, will save the city quite a bit of money. But because it was different from the initial design from this engineer, we have requested this engineer to review it to make sure everything is up to code and the way we expect it to be. So this will cover that additional review.
Just wanted to make sure everybody knew the city engineer was alive and well.
All right. Is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President. I have a resolution asking for unanimous consent to hear today approving the issue of a special event alcohol beverage license for the Sunset Sips.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is an event, a public service event that will be held on the bridge, I think it is, the old bridge. And they sip wine, and not enough to fall off the bridge, but to just raise money for special events.
Is there any additional discussion?
I'd just like to ask the Council Billings to how they keep from getting run over on that bridge while they're drinking out there.
Well, they just don't allow any cars on the bridge.
Oh, okay. I'm just curious there.
Bring your own bottles.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I have also another resolution asking for unanimous consent to approve the issues of a special alcohol beverage license for, AKA bras for the cause.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is a fundraiser for breast cancer. And as we all know, breast cancer affects everybody. And this is to help with the cost of travel for tests and things like that. So it's a countywide initiative. So it'll help everybody in the county.
Is it an event for men or just for women?
I think it's going to be just for women.
Just want to make sure. He said bras.
Yeah, men...
Men and women.
Men are not allowed to attend this event, but men can actually benefit from the proceeds.
Right. Just your money.
Yeah.
Just your money.
And we might think it's funny, but men do have breast cancer. So people need to understand that.
Yes.
All right. Is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yeah, Mr. President. I have the privilege and the honor to bring this one before the council. We were talking about sipping wine on the bridge.
Yes, sir.
Tuscaloosa Bridge, you couldn't have sipping it because you'd fall through the hole. So we're going to have a replacement up there. Thomas and I have seen to that. We're really proud of it. It's a resolution authorizing agreement with Aldoc for Tuscaloosa Avenue Bridge replacement over Black Creek. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Yeah, move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, for just for informational purposes, federal ATRIP funds put $812,608 into this bridge. City funds are $203,152. Total is $1,015,760. Thomas, that's a lot. That is a lot. Anyway, we're proud to give it. Absolutely. Anyway, move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards. Remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor?
Yeah, I would like to recognize some special guests we have here. Dr. Martha Lavender, the interim president at Gaston Community College. And we're hoping real soon she'll be announced. There's been about four or five since I've been here, and it's time we settled in on somebody who's a working machine. She's like the Energizer Bunny, I can tell you. And I believe, Ms. King? Oh, well, I was working down the line that day. And Ms. Teresa Ray on the right, I guess the assistant to the president. So we're glad to have you with us today. Keep up the good work.
Councilwoman Toles?
I'd like to first encourage everyone about our roadblock for sickle cell. The annual sickle cell walk is going to be October the 10th at the amphitheater. But the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority is having a roadblock this Saturday, and we'd just like for you all to come out. It's a worthy cause. They're doing a lot of research on sickle cell, and I just would love for your support. Also, would like to recognize my... She used to be my principal when I was a teacher, and that's Charlotte Crawson. So we're glad to have her here. And just to let you know how important Dr. Lavender is, I was at a conference, and she said, I already told them, so I'm going to say it again so everybody can hear. She says, there are six things. And she gave us six reasons why women should rule the world.
Whoa.
So I think she'll be a great president at Gaston State. She told me not to mention anything about the testosterone. But it was a great conference, and we had some great speakers there. And so, it was a good thing. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the second sexist comment you made today.
What he's referring to, I have to bring up the budget again, but they was milling around. I said, well, I'll bring it up. I'm the only woman up here, and I like to spend money, so why not?
Councilman Eckles? Councilman Worthy? Councilman Billings?
Yes, I went down to Gaston City High School today, and they're having a problem with going to a football game. So I hope they get it resolved today and everything works out okay. That's all I have.
Councilman Cannon?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Reed?
I'd just like to thank the council after 21 years for voting this Tuscaloosa bridge in. I really appreciate it.
We're going to have a grand opening for that bridge.
Thank you. Thank you. I told them that Johnny and Thomas and I are going to have a baptism down there. Bring it on back.
The only thing I have is I had the privilege, and a lot of them didn't know it when I attended last week, but I actually spoke at First United Methodist Church of Gaston here downtown. And it was indeed an honor to be called on to speak down there because I have a historic connection. My grandfather, y'all hear me talk about a decent amount, after he retired, was the custodian there at the First United Methodist Church. So I got to walk those halls as a young boy years ago. And I have a special affinity for, or had a special affinity for Dr. Sandsberry, who used to pad my pocket with $1 bills years ago for some ridiculously simple things. He would ask me what 2 plus 2 was, and I'd tell him 4. And he'd say, boy, you're one of the smartest young men I know. And he'd give me a dollar for it. And he fed my pocket and my ego. So I really appreciate him for that. But it was a good event. And one thing I did like about that group is that they, you know, they questioned... We had a question and answer session after I said my piece, and they talked a lot about what they could do to support the city and help the city, which I thought was encouraging. It was encouraging to hear a group of men sit around and talk about that. And it was also encouraging to hear a group actually talk about how they could support the city as opposed to, you know, being concerned about other things. So again, I do thank them for that invitation and would like to also invite those folks to come to City Hall and support us here at our meetings. I don't think I have anything else. Does anyone have anything else? Okay. All right. We adjourn.